I'd like to call meeting number sixteen, Mahoning County Commissioners, to order where everyone please stand and we pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, this is pretty fancy here. Jason, thank you for allowing us to be here in Boardman. Where'd you go, Jason?
The high-risk district.
He ran out the door and hit on us. Alright, well. I need a lever to lift me up, or a phone book. Anybody have a phone book I can sit on? It's because they have all these big trustees in Boardman. They're all six foot three or bigger, you know, and can sink me down. What happens when you're five foot tall. Well, um, should we just begin with, I was gonna ask Jason to, you know, do a little intro to Boardman and this and that, but I guess he abandoned us. I think he went to Planet Fitness and been working out, so. Jason, I'm looking for you and you abandoned us.
Yes, sir. Well, how can I help you today?
I just thought maybe, you know, we wanted to thank you for, you know, hosting our meeting and allowing us to come in and, you know, the trustees and Bill. I didn't know if you wanted to, you know, introduce.
Thank you guys for coming.
Introduce a few of your...
Yeah, we appreciate you coming down the hall. It's a pleasure to have the Commissioners here and all the staff in Mahoning County. If you need anything, you let me know. I'll be here as your guest today, the host. So, we've got some water in the back and the restroom's up front.
Good man, I'm on a vegetables, fruit, and meat diet, so maybe like a T-bone or something would be nice, sir.
No donuts then, right?
No, no donuts, no sugar.
I would've known.
No sugar, no carbs.
They gave him hard candy.
Oh, man.
Sorry, sorry. Next time, I know better.
Run out and get him an apple.
Alright, we can do that.
Alright, thank you, Jason. We appreciate it. Do you want to do that?
No, it's up to you.
It doesn't matter.
Your best here.
Okay, we're, we, um, well, let's go through public comments. Well, we'll do it as part of public comments. We have Advancing Education, Reducing Crime Day, Saturday, April twenty-second. And I think, what, John Howard and Penny Wells and Maria Pappas?
Yes, we're there, thank you.
Do you want to come up?
Yeah, come on up. We have a little plaque in recognition of Advancing Education, Reducing Crime Day. Carol, you want to give us a little background, maybe?
Well, Maria, of course, has called me months ago and says, "You're gonna be involved in this project."
No asking, just telling.
She just kinda told us that, and so now we're involved in the projects. It's the Mahoning County Commissioners. Anna D has helped us with everything. There are armbands that the Commissioners and the Convention and Visitors Bureau are giving to the program. It's a reading program for all of the, it's not only just Youngstown City Schools. It's Canfield, Boardman, all the county. It's bringing, and I'll let you talk more about it, John. It's like bringing the unity of all the children together so that we can become one, one group, even if we are in separate districts. So, this is a good program, and they have a full day planned, so if you want to...
You want to explain?
John and Jada.
Well, first of all, I'm John Howell, and my wife and I are kind of the, I guess we birthed this, but we couldn't deliver the baby without Penny and without Maria. So, they are, they are by right and left hand on this project. And it's about two essential things. It's about increasing the skill level of K through twelve students reading and writing. Okay? So, to do that, we're having a read-a-thon from nine o'clock on Saturday, people, to six o'clock. There'll be non-stop reading going on at four schools. People are gonna bring their lawn chairs and their favorite book and sit and read, some for an hour, some for two hours. Okay, that's the education piece of the reading. On the writing, we have essay contests. There'll be age-appropriate essay contests administered at each school, K through twelve. We're regaling the appropriate groups. And then we have Barnes and Nobles gift certificates we're giving to the first, second, and third level, I mean, winners and so forth. So, again, it's about your writing. And then on the second side is reducing crime. And like I said to Penny and to Maria many times, doesn't matter where you live, you want crime to be less on your street, right? Anybody in here who doesn't want crime less on their street, of course not. Everybody does. So, that's what we're trying to do in the county on that day. We're trying to bring people together from the suburbs, from the inner city, and say, "Hey, we're standing up against crime." So, we've got Judge Teresa Delikus bringing Juvenile Justice Center to come and teach us about keeping our children out of the system, out of the juvenile system. How do you do that? We have Sandy Hook Promise, a group out of Connecticut who are coming in to teach our children about how to identify danger in the school system and to report it to an adult. And then we have Chief Lees and the Youngstown Police Department are coming to teach about community policing. And then the crown jewel of the day will be an anti-crime candlelight march at the end of the day. We'll be marching in all four sides of Youngstown, saying, "We're taking back our city. The streets don't belong to the bad guys, they belong to the good guys." And you'll see kids with their banners saying, "Hey, I'm gonna ride my bike safe in Youngstown this summer." Again, standing up against crime.
Want to mention all the giveaways?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. We've got $1,200 in Barnes and Noble gift certificates that will be given out.
Bicycles.
For the winners of the essay contest. What else you wanna talk about? Well, we just picked up twenty bicycles from Walmart. They just put them together. They said they've never had an order this big at one time at the Walmart here in Boardman. But we're giving those bikes out, five at each site. Remember, it's four different sites, to kids for reading and writing and other things throughout the day. So, it's exciting, it's free hot breakfast, there's free hot lunch for everyone. We were able to get some, why couldn't I buy some Nooks? What was the thing you called Nooks? You know, is that what they're called? Your readers, right? We bought eight of those, so there'll be two of those given away at each site. So, we're really just excited to get our kids excited about reading and writing. Because like I said before, if you cannot read and you cannot write, you go nowhere. Okay? You're not getting out of poverty. If you can't read, then you can't write. So, we want to get our people out of poverty. We want them to stand on their own two feet, and the way you do that is education. Like I always say, education is the window to opportunity. And once we wrap our head around that as a community, as a county, and work toward that, we're gonna be lifting the quality of life in our county. And like I said, the three things, and I'm close with this, that I believe we all want to work together and hold hands, kumbaya if you will, and be better at, is the three Cs. I always, I manage people in Dallas and Phoenix and Atlanta and Bloomington. So, I have people all around the United States I manage. But I tell them, in order for us to be a strong team, we have to practice the three Cs. And the three Cs that I preach to my people are this, and I'll say it to us here today, is we gotta get better at the three Cs. The three Cs are simply cooperation, communication, and collaboration. Once we collaborate better, once we communicate better, once we cooperate better, we have a better community. So, thank you for having us today.
And on that note, we should really give a plug to Krish Mohib and Ron Iarussi, our city and county leaders in the educational community.
We do have celebrity readers.
We have celebrity readers, yes.
And we just, we didn't hear the answer no, no, with this project. And it's a big project. The support from the Youngstown City Schools has been phenomenal. And Joe Nora has been our right-hand man through all this.
Absolutely.
And it couldn't have really happened without the leadership of CEO Krish Mohib. He cannot be here today because he has a commissioning to prepare for.
Right, but when we come back to you, we circle back to the Commissioners here. I personally have not met any of you, but she was our entry point to you. And we came and we had, they bought us lunch, pizza and salad, and we said we got to know each other, and our hearts amended because we all believe in reducing crime and elevating the reading and writing levels of our children. Who doesn't want that? Anybody in here doesn't want that? I think everybody wants that. So, I think that's why this project has been so effective and it's kind of ballooned because these are germane issues to raising the quality of life. So, that's why people say, "Yeah, I can get on board here. Either you have a child who you want to read better, or a grandchild, or whatever." So, everybody can relate to this subject matter. So, we thank Boardman, we thank the Commissioners, because everybody pitching in is what made this happen so far to this point. We could never have done this on our own. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart. My wife's named Adrian, she's working today, so that's why she couldn't be here. But we work every night on this project, and we can't wait till Saturday. We're just excited. So, I think, anything else you want to say, ladies?
No, just, I really, yes.
Oh, let's see, the people see them.
I really would like to thank the Board of the County Commissioners because we have not always had this level of stability in our county. And I think that your leadership has a lot to do with that. Anthony and Carol and David, I think we're really blessed in this county. Thank you. This is where this project really is all about.
And just real quick, every child, twelve and under, who comes to the event, they'll be registered. We're not, we're just not letting kids come and run all over. It's just gonna be ordered, okay? When they come and they register, they will get your wristband. This will tell everybody that that child is registered, we know who they are, and we're gonna track them and get them home safely, okay? And we have ambassadors who will be wearing yellow, Carol, yellow, t-shirts. And those are the ones who the kids will be told at registration, "If you get in trouble, or a safety factor, or you need to get in the restroom, or you need to go to the next event, you go to someone in a yellow t-shirt." So, how be fitting that you guys got yellow? I didn't even know you had yellow. So, thank you from the bottom of our hearts, we so appreciate it.
Thank you. And for any of you here today that want to come, our sites are McGuffey Elementary on the west side, Taft Elementary on the south side, Martin Luther King Elementary on the east side, and Harding Elementary on the north side. Come, bring a book. We have the Superintendent and Boardman, Tim Saxton, is one of our celebrity readers.
Alex.
Alex Jordan from Canfield is coming, is one of the celebrity readers. We have kids from Boardman High School as student ambassadors, so.
Are we gonna let him make his presentation?
No, no, you've really been...
Please stop in.
John, Penny, and Maria, thank you so much for the hard work. And, you know, you make our community better with all the things that you do. So, thank you so much on behalf of the County Commissioners.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, John.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Yes, please, you can move in, please, thank you. Two times. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You know, John, maybe we can get one of those wristbands for Carol, you know? We register her.
Yeah.
She goes out jogging a lot. If she makes a wrong turn, you know, we need to get her back. Okay, thank you. Just move on to public comments. Anyone have any public comments they would like to? Yes, please.
Uh, thanks, Carrie Pettit, I'm from Interfaith Home Maintenance Service 1005, Restway Avenue. That's a hard act to follow, but I'd like to introduce myself again. My name is Carrie Pettit. I'm the new Director of Interfaith Home Maintenance Service. Our previous Director, Jenny Dennis, is retired after nineteen years of service. And I just wanted to come give you a quick update on the status of Interfaith. Our mission is to assist low-income homeowners in Mahoning County with emergency or necessary home repairs. We work for folks who own their homes, have lived in their homes for at least a year. Utilities do need to be on and their property taxes pay. Our clients have an income out of below fifty percent medium, but in reality, it's actually about ninety percent of our homeowners that benefit from our work have an income of less than thirty-five percent medium. That would be $1,155 per month for a single-family household. In 2016, we assisted 631 clients by completing 1,026 jobs. The demand for our services is at an all-time high. We have over 350 applications waiting for jobs to be done. The work we do is very important. A broken furnace in the middle of winter would mean that the homeowner would have to find an alternate place to stay. Cold temperatures during these freezing times could mean that their water pipes could freeze and their house could quickly become a total loss. Jobs like installing first-floor bathrooms and ramps make it possible for the homeowner to stay in their home. And that could be for years to come, but that costs at about $6,000 a job. Were to compare, if they weren't able to do that and had to go into nursing care, that would cost the taxpayers about $5,000 a month for every month for the rest of that person's life. So, our services are very important. Over the years, Interfaith has been funded mainly by grants such as Community Development Block Grant, the High Housing Trust Fund, and through the Area Agency on Aging. But I should add that eighty-six percent of our jobs were in 2016, were in city of Youngstown, whereas funded only by thirty-nine percent of the Community Block Grant. Additionally, eighty-five percent of jobs in Mahoning County were for those over the age of sixty, but only thirteen percent of our funds came from the Area Agency on Aging. Sadly, due to economic changes, we've seen a twenty percent loss in our funding already this year. We are doing everything we can to continue to do the services and help those low-income homeowners of Mahoning County. But we do need your continued help and support so that we can continue to help those low-income homeowners in Mahoning County. But on behalf of the Board of Interfaith, myself and my staff, we do want to thank you Commissioners for your continued support of Interfaith over the past forty-two years. And it is our desire to be able to help continue to help those low-income homeowners of Mahoning County. And we're just doing everything we can to find additional funding to cover that twenty percent loss. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Who's your friend there?
So, my friend is, his name is Claus. He's a service dog in training. In addition to my work at Interfaith, I'm a volunteer for Canine Companions for Independence. It's a national organization that provides service dogs to people with disabilities. The average cost of these dogs is $50,000, but they're given to these applicants free of charge because of the large support nationally and through public raisers like myself. So, Claus is actually almost done with my time with him. He's gonna go to college here soon to become, learn his specific commands, like opening and closing doors, picking up dropped items. And I have a new puppy already. In about two months, you'll see him with me. He's a little too young to go out public right now. When you see the people that they go to, it makes everybody... He's actually my eighth puppy that I've raised, and I've had four that are working nationally in the United States.
Wow, that's amazing. You can't get any of the people who work for us to behave that way.
We do appreciate your work for us.
That's pretty amazing. Thank you very much, Carrie. Okay, move on to...
Public.
Oh, anybody else? I'm sorry.
I was here to hear what you guys had to say, but I gotta tell you guys something. I've got some good news coming in here. I don't think this is on, and I don't need it. I'm Fred Dabiko, 6920 Ron Joy. The Executive Director for the Youngstown Regional Film Commission, or nonprofit, that is bringing an industry into our region that's including Trumbull, Mahoning, and Columbiana County. We are looking to expand to Asburyville as well as someday into the Kent State area because it's a beautiful little town. In the meantime, what we do is we attract film production like they're having in Cleveland and Pittsburgh to come to Youngstown. There's no reason why we shouldn't have this industry here. It's actually the youth retention that we're looking for so that our economic depression ceases. Because once the youth stay, the housing market increases, the vibrant community survives and thrives, and that's what we're looking for in the Youngstown area, in Mahoning County, what have you. I've been working really hard for four years as the Commissioners know. We do not have funding support from the counties on any level, which, you know, it's fine at this point. We are fiable, we do take donations to the Youngstown Regional Film Commission. And what our job is to do is, once productions come here, is to help them navigate our area, find locations of interest, places to shoot, people to hire, vendors to employ, hire for truck rental, catering services, hotel rooms. So, over the past couple of years, we've had a few approach the city of Youngstown for a float loan program that they offered here in Youngstown. Not every project needs the loan program. Some projects already have their funding, which we happen to have a project coming in. It's roughly between seven to nine million dollars. And it's got some pretty big names in it. And I just journeyed out to Asbury Park, New Jersey. I don't know if anyone's been to Asbury Park? You know, the Boardwalk, Bruce Springsteen, back in the days? Okay, think about American Graffiti, Eddie and the Cruisers. You know, it's when the greasers met the rockers, and they used to rumble on the beach, set up things with fists and all that back in the day. Bruce Springsteen's music cameo by him, the Stone Pony. Well, we scouted Youngstown. We found three locations for the Stone Pony in New Jersey and the south side of Youngstown. And they love it, and they're coming next week. And we're gonna be here on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday with four producers. One of them is able to write a very large check for any project she likes. They're staying in Canfield with, once again, one of our Mahoning County hotels that we have, the Ampton. And they're gonna be here with them again. We have a list of vendors from the area that we're gonna be hiring through these crews. This is just one of five projects now in the door. We have this project, like I mentioned, between seven to nine million, another one at 2.5 million. I got a referral call from Tim Ryan's office yesterday from a group that formed a super PAC, filmmakers from Ohio that are looking to bring projects here. And we're gonna be working on bringing those right here to Youngstown. They're from those moms from Niles. Got this call, and we would love to have you. He's coming in as well next week. He actually went and met with Ray Mancini up in Cleveland yesterday. He's coming, he does a travel magazine out of New York, and he can't wait to bring a project to Ohio. Then I get another email last night, and all this is verifiable on my emails. I don't know what it is, but they keep on coming in. So, next week, we will have guests in town. I don't know if the Commissioners will be available on... I know Wednesday, we're meeting with Sharon around 11:30 for economic development purposes, just to talk to them. They don't need a float loan, but they just want to talk and maybe to meet with the mayor. But I'd like to introduce Commissioners as well. What we're looking for for this project, we're gonna need old bars, old churches. We need gas stations. I need a drive-in. If anyone could think of an old AMW drive-in, I don't care if it's Columbiana, Trumbull, or Mahoning, we want to find one so they don't go to Asbury Park. We are gonna get in touch with Mike Ray, who knows the owner of Eddie's Grill. We've scouted Eddie's Grill up in Geneva on the lake, which is gonna duplicate for the east coast. That beach area is perfect. So, we tell Hollywood, "Hey, if you need a notion, go to Lake Erie, it looks the same." So, we will be driving up and around, but we are gonna be focused on shooting in Youngstown. There'll be jobs, there'll be background talent casting. Keep watch, if you want, with the Facebook page. The Youngstown Regional Film Commission will be posting things. One need I do need is a '67 red Firebird. If anyone knows anybody really into old cars and car clubs, we need a red '67 Firebird. I told them, we've got car clubs in the area, I'm sure we can find one. But they're gonna be here scouting next week. Are you guys available at any time that we can maybe send something on a Wednesday after lunch with the mayor or Sharon? Do you want to come by, or should we stop there or call, or what would be the best approach? Would you say?
Yeah, just give the information to Audrey or Tiana, and so we know what it is.
Yeah, and this one is just, they're ready to go. We don't have to wait for any approvals from council or nothing, we're good to go. They just want to meet and greet and say, "Hi, we're gonna be shooting in your area" and see what kind of impact we're gonna have. We're still working on one loan program with a drawer and buffers company, actually. They want to use Mill Creek Park, and they love the Appalachian look of it. It's gonna be like a Pentecostal snake handling movie, something of that nature, and they love Mill Creek Park. So, we're trying to get in the doors. We've got some language we're working out with the city. This is a good endeavor. It's been really tough, but we're doing it. You guys are gonna see some results this year. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Appreciate you. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comments? Okay, move on to approval of previous minutes of Board meeting number fifteen, Thursday, April thirteenth, 2017, and approval of bills for payment. Motion?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Emilio Guedes.
Yes.
Commissioner Travis Canty.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditson.
Yes. Okay, advertisement for bids, so let me grant's.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Yeah.
This is part of our 2016 Community Development Loan Grant. These programs were selected last year, and we're moving to vote for Struthers, City of Struthers, Earth District State.
Motion approved, advertisement for bids, number one.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Emilio Guedes.
Yes.
Commissioner Travis Canty.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditson.
Yes. Okay, legal notices, lead basis.
This is a public hearing number two for Mahoning County Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program. Grant acquired by the state. Thank you, Nancy, for sticking that in for me. This is from Chip.
Excellent, okay, thanks.
Motion approved, legal notice, number one.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Emilio Guedes.
Yes.
Commissioner Travis Canty.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditson.
Yes. Journal entries.
Motion to approve journal entry, number one.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Emilio Guedes.
Yes.
Commissioner Travis Canty.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditson.
Yes. Agreements. Convention and visitors. Linda.
Good morning. This is an agreement with Youngstown Class B baseball. They had outfield advertising space opened up at Seand Park, which is the host of many, many, many baseball tournaments over the spring and summer months, so it's good visibility for us. It's up for you.
Excellent. Excellent. E nine one one, Maggie.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Nancy. This is the last piece for our network that is going in statewide, and it is non-general, and we do appreciate your support on this because this is a very large project for us, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Maggie. Thank you for the work. Okay, lead base.
These are three agreements for, I believe the first one is lead hazard control work, very small job. D and E are both Community Housing Impact and Preservation Home Repair.
All right, thanks. Recycling.
Look, my Commissioners. Item F is an agreement with Damascus Elementary, reimbursement of transportation for environmentally-themed field trips. Keep in mind, this is funded through a grant from the US Department of Agriculture. Also, item G is our agreement with Hazmat, provide emergency assistance for any solid waste-related emergency. For example, as a truck overturned on the 7/11/680 about three days ago, they were there to mitigate that problem. Both a non-general fund.
Okay, agreements.
Motion approved, agreements, letters A through G.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Emilio Guedes.
Yes.
Commissioner Travis Canty.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditson.
Yes. Resolutions.
Motion approved, resolutions, number one, issues.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Emilio Guedes.
Yes.
Commissioner Travis Canty.
Yes.
Commissioner Ditson.
Yes. Okay, resolution. Facilities purchasing. All right, we lost Jimmy. Resolution, do you want to do that?
Commissioner, this is a resolution, a necessity, for our facilities department to purchase a 2017 Ford Utility and Scepter. This is their current car. Pretty much our maintenance department told them they need to get another one. We didn't have another one they could get that could be transferred, so this is for them to purchase for that. Amount of $26,265, and this is general.
Thanks, Maggie. Okay, thanks, Maggie. Human resources, recycling.
Oh, yeah, great.
Well, commissioners, this is the conditional approval agreement for replacement of one vacant position field operator. I'd be pending drug screening and driving back on ten seconds.
Okay, thanks. Jobs and family, Bob.
Good morning, commissioners. This is an approval of a resolution. We had to do a survey to assure some funding for our Title Twenty program, which is referred to term PRC. Our transportation program goes to their Hope House, Yattitu House, those type of non-traditional programming. And most of the funding that's gonna come through there will be non-General.
Thanks, Bob. Borders.
Good morning, commissioners. Norlyn called me yesterday to represent her here regarding this matter. It's a moral obligation to make payment to Xerox Corporation for a change in the agreement for their maintenance contract.
She doesn't wanna face the wrath of Jimmy, and he's not here.
Thank you.
Okay, motion approved resolutions.
Motion approved resolutions, A through D.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Emilio Guedes?
Yes.
Commissioner Travis Canti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditson?
Yes. Okay. See, that was relatively dangerous. Call for the good of the order. Luke?
Everything, we're in our full season for our special event collections, so this Saturday begins the appliance recycling collection in Pointeville Township. There's also a paper shredding event at Shepherd of the Valley in Poland coming up. Check our website for more details.
Good. Any kind of appliance?
Yes, any kind. Anything primarily made of Ferris, they're taking there, and there'll be no charge for the free-on-removal.
Microwaves?
Uh, yes.
Okay, darn. Okay. Got something big you wanna get rid of? Bring it.
That's a good call.
Pat? Talk to us, Pat.
Well, the orange barrels are out. Construction has started. Anybody in the Austintown area can see Meridian Road is underway. Just be cautious of the construction zone, the workers out there, slow it down a little bit. It's gonna be an inconvenience for probably the remainder of this year, but when it's done, it's gonna be a very nice project, well-needed, and should hopefully make the drive much, much smoother.
Yeah, I'll tell ya, between Youngstown and Austintown, it's just amazing how, how it's, the blacktop is just rolled up on the curves down towards the interstate, so it's been tough going, but that's, it's a great project. Thank you.
One thing, Dave. Tuesday night, I was with the Boardman Civic Association, they had their academic recognition dinner, recognizing a hundred and forty-five high school seniors from Boardman, most of Boardman High, but from Moonie and Ursula and Valley Christian. These kids all achieved over three point five grade point average. It was a very nice event, and kudos to the students and to Boardman.
Beautiful. Nice. Okay, anyone else? Linda?
Um, just real quick. Youngstown Phantoms are in the Clark Cup Playoff. They would, yes, they are. They appreciate your support, try to attend the game. On the twenty-first, they're playing the Chicago Steel down at Cavelli Center. Wish them good luck, hopefully they can bring that, bring that cup home.
Nice.
Um, the Youngstown Fleet, which is gaining in popularity hand over fist, their season starts again.
Youngstown what?
Youngstown Fleet, market for makers, down in the, in the area near the Cavelli Center once a month. They're down there, and their April fleet will be April twenty-second this weekend. And then it's once a month after that through the fall. Some really, really cool stuff you can get there from local vendors, made with, you know, homemade projects, they're, they're expanding their, their vendor space and so forth, and it, it's a great place to showcase locally-made products and goods. If you have some time to head down there, it would be great. And also, on Saturday, there's so much going on.
There's activities.
Is all day in downtown, the Federal Frenzy, which is put together by Y. issue Penguin Productions. There'll be live music all day downtown, so good weekend coming up.
Excellent. Thank you. So they have fresh fruits there as well, when that, when season can...
It, maybe not yet. Might be a little early, but it, it's primarily product, not so much produce, not so much farmer's market, but, you know, and food trucks will roll in and things like that from time to time, so there, there are some food offerings.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Everyone's so quiet and smiling. Audrey, you're all smiling and quiet.
I know. I just wanna say that there will be a legislative reception on the twenty-sixth down in Columbus where county officials can actually talk with legislators and stuff, and we know we have the information going on with the Medicaid, managed care sales pact and that issue. There's also gonna be a press conference on the State House, court steps, steps around four fifteen, so we'll have representatives from commissioners' offices going, from the auditor's office, Pat's going, and Norlyn is going. So we will have presence from Mahoning County down there, and some of the others still pushing forward and kinda making sure that the voices are heard. So just one more for commissioners now.
Thank you. Okay. Carol?
I don't know, I guess everybody's just smiling. It looks like we're gonna have a storm outside, and we all viewed our vacation today and got that ready. Have a safe week ahead. Enjoy your weekend. Keep some of, all the employees that we have in Mahoning County in your prayers that aren't well. Keep them in your prayers over the weekend, and just be safe. There's so many things going on this weekend. I mean, we start actually tonight with, with the Growth Foundation's having a quarter auction, and...
Action.
Action, and St. Joe's School is having a big auction, and so we could just be out on the road from the time we get out of bed till the time we go to bed, but...
That's why I gained twenty pounds.
But the one thing that, that will really be nice if you have a chance and you are in the area is the reading program that will go on this weekend on Saturday with the city schools and the county schools that are partnering up on a lot of different things. So if anybody is, wants to be a part of that, you saw the locations, pick one and just go, it'll be a nice event. So have a safe weekend, see you next week.
Thank you. Yeah.
I just wanna give Interfaith Home Maintenance a plug. I did a lot of work with you back in the nineties when I worked with Jim Traficant. You saved a lot of homes, a lot of people's lives. You made their living conditions better. Always been a supporter of what you do and hope that continues in what you're doing. And the literacy program this weekend with the reading is very important. When you have twenty-one percent of the adult population in the United States that can't read below the fifth-grade level, I think what everything that was said here today is very important. Can't read, you can't interpret, you can't understand, it's gonna be very difficult, you know, to meander through life, and Saturday's gonna be a wonderful day, everybody reading, and I think that's where it starts, is with the basics curriculum. So it was great, the way Carol set this up for us to honor these folks.
Anna was there as well, and Audrey had come in, and...
It's important.
Commissioners were both at different meetings at that time, but Maria stayed with me.
They left.
All day.
Thanks. Thank you.
Right, Emma? Yes, she did. Oh, yes, she did. All day. We did have nice lunch. Yeah, you had... Thanks, Carol. You're welcome.
Well, I, I would like to thank the Boardman trustees, Brad, Larry, Tom, Bill, fiscal officer, for hosting our meeting this morning. You know, we had to come and look at a road vacation. You know, speaking of vacation, going on vacation next week, and the road's going on vacation today. So we have that hearing at eleven o'clock, you know, so we're vacating the road in Boardman. So that was the impetus of, you know, trying to come to Boardman, not only to be closer to different communities, we try to move around during the year and, and hold our meetings in different communities, so there's different populace gets an opportunity to come to it. We thank Boardman, and see Marilyn sitting back there. Marilyn Kenner, how are you?
Great.
The new road superintendent and boardman?
Yes.
You know, I, I, I think maybe that you get a little less pothole calls than you did a few years back, huh?
Um, yes. I did less.
You shifted those to Pat, you know, so...
And I know what I say, gives me great joy to always say, I'm sort of this county where I'm sometimes...
You know, it just depends on whose ox is getting gorged, you know?